Says waiting for Langley City. If that means anything.
Okay, thank you. I'll keep working on it.
Perfect. Are we, uh, should we proceed at this time?
Yes, Mayor Pahal.
Thank you. I'd like to call the December 5th, 2022 Public Hearing to order. And begin by acknowledging that the land on which we are gathered is the traditional unceded territories of the Katsi, Matqui, Quantlin and Semiamu First Nations. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to section four, six, four of the Local Government Act in order to consider the following bylaw. Bylaw three, two, two, one, zoning amendment number one, nine, zero, RZ zero, four hyphen two, two, and development permit number DP zero, seven hyphen two, two. A bylaw to rezone the property located at five, three, oh, two, two hundred Street, two hundred eleven, two hundred twenty-one, two hundred thirty-one, fifty-third Avenue, two hundred thirty, fifty-three Avenue from RS one, single-family residential zone to the CD eighty-six Comprehensive Development Zone to accommodate a six-story eighty-four-unit apartment development. I would like to thank everybody for attending this public hearing, which is taking place by electronic means via Zoom. If we encounter technical challenges during this meeting, please stand by as we want to ensure everyone who wishes to speak is afforded the opportunity to do so. This public hearing is being livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel and is also being recorded and will be posted to the city's website. If you're watching and wish to attend this electronic meeting, you can go to www.langleycity.ca to register and join the meeting. At this public hearing, those in attendance at this meeting who believe that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw will be allowed to make representation to council and shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard respecting matters contained in the bylaw. Once the meeting, once in the meeting, you may use the raise your hand function to indicate your wish to speak, which will automatically put you in a speaker's queue. You will be invited to speak in the order in which hands are raised. When it is your turn to speak, staff will prompt you with a message asking you to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Please note, the chat function will not be monitored during this public hearing webinar. Please commence your comments to council by clearly stating your name and street address. Unit numbers are not required. You will have five minutes to give us the benefit of your views concerning the bylaw. Your name, address, and comments will form part of the public record of this public hearing. Members of council may, if they wish, ask questions of you following your presentation. However, the main function of council members this evening is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council at this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with individual citizens. Once you have completed your comments, staff will mute your microphone. Everyone shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making their views heard. Uh, sorry, I had YouTube on and I heard myself, so I will continue. Everyone, uh, who wishes to speak has done so. I will call for the speakers for a second time, at which time those who wish to speak again should indicate so by using the raise hand function. Speakers will again have five minutes to provide their views. I will then call for speakers for a third and final time. If there are no further speakers, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing. In order to preserve the integrity of the public hearing process, following the close of the public meeting, council may not receive any more correspondence or representation written or verbal regarding the bylaw. The public was also given the opportunity to provide written submissions for this public hearing. All submissions will be retained by the corporate officer and copies of the submissions will be available from her on request following the hearing and shall form part of the public record of these proceedings. Ms. Kenny, can you please advise how notification was provided for this public hearing and whether we have received any correspondence?
Yes, Mayor Pahal, two newspaper advertisements for this bylaw were placed in the November twenty-fourth and December first editions of the Langley Advance Times and notices were mailed out to the owners within a hundred meters of the subject properties. Notice of the public hearing was also placed on the city's website and on the posting board of the first floor of City Hall. We've received two pieces of correspondence and they were received after publication of the agenda and so have been circulated to council via email.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kenny. So now we will move on to bylaw three, two, two, one, zoning amendment number one, ninety, RZ zero, four hyphen twenty-two and development permit DP zero, seven hyphen twenty-two. Mr. Johansson, can you please provide an overview of the purpose of the bylaw number three, two, one, one?
Good evening, Mayor and Council and members of the audience. The subject properties are zoned RS one, single-family residential in the zoning bylaw and designated low-rise residential in official committee plan or OCP. This land use allows multifamily apartment development to a maximum building height of six stories and a maximum density of two-point-one floor area ratio or FAR. The density of the proposed development complies with the OCP but exceeds the RM three parameters in the current zoning bylaw. So a comprehensive development zone or CD zone is necessary to accommodate the applicant's proposed rezoning of the site. The applicant is also proposing variances for visitor parking and accessible parking stall length as well as proposing reduced resident parking. Further details and rationale for the proposed variances are included in the staff report. And I believe the applicant is in the audience who can speak to their proposal. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. At this time, I would now like to invite the applicant to speak on the proposed bylaw. Mr. Adab.
Thank you very much. Let me share my screen. Okay. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Fred Adab. I'm the architect of the project. And, uh, the developer team and landscape architect is also present after I speak about the project. Rod will speak about landscaping issues if is any question. With developers, they are both present. This is slide shows the location of the uh, property in here with pink. As you can see, all the surrounding areas and lots or sites are designated to be, to either be uh, in the, is either built or in the process of getting permit or future developments, but they're all four to six story. That's six story. This is five story, six story. Five story, six story is our site and the property next door is also going to develop with six-story building. Our site has frontage on two hundred and fifty-three A and also a connection to the fifty-three A Avenue and two hundred A Avenue through an existing cul-de-sac that will be removed and these two streets or these two roads will be connected in the future. This is the site plan. The only reason I'm sure the site plan is to show this location. And this location, as I indicated, there is a cul-de-sac at the moment. There is no connection fifteen fifty-three and two hundred A and now with the ninety-degree angle, they're connected. Our site, uh, vehicular entry and loading and uh, are through this. And this will be an access to the site on the north. This is our site plan and the site plan. Uh, so we go back to the axis uh, from the fifty-three A goes down. This area is almost flat. It is flat. And there is a loading bay in here and this loading bay has a direct connection through the wider corridor here to elevator for moving in and out. Uh, and there is a transformer here uh, on our property and this location has been verified by BC Hydro. What you see here in dark gray color is a five-meter existence sanitary, which we are not touching it. And then next to it, area, there is a uh, I understand above this could be, uh, could be grass or uh, that's the, on the landscape architect probably will talk about that. From here, we go to underground parking. We have two level of underground parking. The main entry to the building is from fifty-three A. We have an accessible ramp in here and steps going up. So the, the, the main floor is on a sort of podium about five feet, four to five feet high, depending on the grade elevations from the uh, from the street. And, uh, every unit at ground floor has a patio and direct access uh, through these steps to the street. And, uh, there is an access also from the two hundred Street uh, with a, uh, uh, very, well, three percent slope going to the east and coming in here. And this is the connection between the rear of the property and two hundred or between the indoor amenity and two hundred. And the units facing north as well, they have patios, private patios and access from this walkway. Although the, 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 the main floor or first floor is raised five foot from the floor, but is stepped down by, uh, planters here. So we have one patio level with the floor, eh, floor grade and then the second patio and patio, so is broken down the uh, the patio. This is a, uh, six visit, visitors bicycle rack. And these are the exits. Uh, out here and out to two hundred. This is a, uh, third floor, which is our typical floor. And, uh, I'm sure realize that it's a very very challenging site to design because it faces two streets and is irregular shape and sort of also faces fifty-three A. And, uh, we have developed an L-shaped footprint, which responds to the uh, to the lot configuration and lot area. So this is typical floor plans and uh, the corner units are larger. Uh, and this floor goes up, up to sixth floor. And then on the sixth floor, uh, this is the sixth floor. We have a setback along the two streets. And you can see how this setback plays a major role on the elevation and facade of the building and vocabulary that we were trying to introduce. These two units are three-bedroom units with a very larger deck. And this dashed line is the line of the overhang and these posts are for, to hold that overhang. So uh, these are larger units, three-bedroom uh, facing uh, two large decks at this corner. And we specifically cut this corner and that corner again from architectural point of view that I'll explain a bit later. This is the roof plan. Uh, I don't talk about really uh, type of vegetation, but this roof is accessible by stair here. And, uh, we have, uh, two hose bibs in these two locations and we have this pavers, stepping uh, pavers for, uh, for maintenance. The roof is set and doesn't need really maintenance, but in case if strata wants to change the dead plants or replace or whatever, we have access, we have hose bibs and it's quite, um, uh, easily maintained. So this is the, uh, corner of two hundred and fifty-three A and you can see the building has presence in both streets. Here we have this balconies and windows who are two hundred Street. And, uh, we have an acoustic report for these units and these corner units. I will comply with that acoustic reports in terms of sound. Uh, uh, and then the main entry to the building is from fifty-three A here and we have brick up to the fifth floor and that's the setback that I was explaining the floor plan that gives a character to the facade of the building. That's a another view from other side from fifty-three A. Uh, from east looking to the west. Again, that, uh, setback turns and turns here and that's that large deck I was talking about it. Uh, the corner in both sides are uh, spandrel and glass to give it a, a, a different and contrasting character. This is a bird-eye view from the neighboring property here. And that's a school on the other side. And, uh, again, this facing two hundred and uh, this is the walkway we were talking about. These are the two facades. Uh, I will explain about the material in another uh, slide. These are the side elevations, east and west. Uh, we have, we have really used, uh, uh, the material that we have, which is, uh, brick siding and hardy panel in every facade uh, uh, equally. So we haven't really given any uh, priority to one facade and other. And this is the material board. And this is our color palette. This is the color of the brick uh, which we have here. And we have two type of hardy panel. One is off-white and one is, uh, 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 gray. Uh, and, uh, there is a contrast between these two for sure. The fascia board is black, uh, and aluminum windows are black and railings are black. And architectural concrete that are really not visible because of landscaping. And because the fact that I said that the planters are stepped down and uh, we have, uh, we don't see any really high concrete wall along the street anywhere because we have two tiers of planters. But this is the architectural concrete. And, uh, the soffits, uh, from the balcony are wood soffit, wood color, aluminum perforated. This is the section of the building and, uh, these are from the, from the road. I forgot to say that there are three-meter dedication along the fifty-three A and two-and-a-half meter dedication along, uh, two hundred Street. And, uh, and corner cut at the two hundred and fifty-three. And this, this shows the setback I was talking about. I've been told to keep it short and I'm trying for the first time to be quick and on time. So this is another section. And, uh, this is our property line. These are setbacks. In terms of, uh, in terms of, uh, design approach, we comply with the new OCP in terms of parking ratio, visitor's parking ratio and, uh, the density. So basically, considering the revised new OCP, we comply with it exactly. Uh, the unit mix, we have eighty-four units in total. And, uh, uh, this eighty-four units, uh, uh, there is one studio, eight one-bedroom, uh, thirty-six one-bedroom and then and thirty-four two-bedroom and five three-bedroom. So in terms of, uh, unit mixes, in terms of uh, product that can be available for, uh, for all sorts of uh, demands and purchases. Uh, the studio and one-bedrooms are small, are attainable. Uh, the three bedrooms are of course larger, but for, uh, for, uh, single people, for, uh, married with no children, for married with children, with married with many children, we have everything for you. And then twenty percent of the units are designed with, uh, adaptable, being adaptable. So you can easily make them accessible units in, in case. Uh, the parkings we have, uh, we have, uh, I think eight, ten percent of the parkings are, are EV chargers. And, uh, whoever wants to buy those spots in the parking uh, will pay forty dollar per month to the strata for using those, uh, EV chargers. And, uh, the there was a slide. I don't know what happened to it about. Uh, sorry, go back about, oh yeah, here. We have taken into account really, uh, sustainable green measures. Uh, first of all, we are lucky with the location. We are within walking, cycling, uh, uh, and public transit is all there. And, uh, we have, I have some figures here with ten minutes walking distance to downtown, two minutes walking distance to elementary school, ten minutes walking distance to team center, five minutes walking distance to Lynwood and Brighton Park. And there are four buses running through two hundred and fifty-three A Avenue. So we have been very lucky in that uh, terms. Now, in terms of uh, air conditioning and heating system, we have HRV, heat-to-cooled ventilation in every unit. And the heating is provided by baseboards. And the cooling is provided by AC system installed under the windows. And they have one vent to outside. So, uh, is either to outside or into the balcony, depending where we have a solid wall. Before we had couple of units that we didn't have a solid wall and we wanted to uh, provide, uh, not through opening the sliding doors, no, but within the sliding doors an area, the window company will build it, but that's gone now. So every building has a AC unit. Uh, I will be suggesting to developers to have on the, on the sixth floor, which we have large decks, to have a actual a heat pump, condensing unit on the balcony. So that gives you hot and cold for the larger units. Okay, so we go back to our sustainability measures. We talked about distances, housing diversity and choices. I mentioned about type of accommodation that provided. The roof provides reduces solar intensity, EV charges, adaptable units, as I mentioned, twenty percent. And our material are all recycled material. We have deep balconies for all the units and large patches at the ground floor, indoor and outdoor amenities. We have store management uh, provision, which there will be a tank on the, on the ramp. There was a ramp on the access from the lane. So the water goes there, then from there it gets discharged. And we have permeable pavers. Uh, those stairs that were in the plan, they have direct access to underground level. So necessarily you don't have to use elevator. You can walk uh, up. And we have energy-efficient bas and light fixture and we comply with the energy code. So I'm done now. Uh, Rod can take over. I stopped sharing.
Hello, everybody. Um. Can you see this?
Yep, yes.
Okay. All right. So I'll quickly go through the landscape. This drawing, the drawing number one basically shows um, all the landscaping that's in, on the project and on, on the offsite. So maybe starting at the bottom here, fifty-third Avenue, we have, um, uh, streetscape with a boulevard with lawn and street trees. And along two hundred, we have a little bit more narrow strip of lawn, but with a wider, um, asphalt, uh, bike path, the walkway. And as Fred has mentioned, main entrance is here. Steps coming up. We have, uh, basically the, um, wheelchair ramp up. Um, all these units are paved with, uh, two-by-two unit pavers, uh, heavily planted along the perimeter of this. And again, here's the terrace planters, uh, lots of planting all the way around. And this, uh, right away at the back, we are planting shrubs on it, um, just to give it a, uh, nice buffer for the adjacent, uh, property. And again, here's the, uh, this is the, uh, outdoor patio. We have a long walkway that's, it's, it's kind of like a, uh, a slope with some landings that take you straight up from the street up to this, uh, outdoor patio. And then the back, of course, this is the entrance coming in. And you can see we've got trees planted along the perimeter and then small trees um, throughout the, throughout the project here. Um, this, this, uh, image here, uh, portrays the front of the building and, and a little bit more detail. So now you got, you get to see a little bit more of the, the planting that we've got around the front. You can see the stairs coming up. Um, entrance area, bike, a bike, uh, parking all the way through large patios, uh, with, uh, unit pave, pavement. This drawing here, um, is intended to show landscape lighting, um. It's a little hard to see for everybody, but we have symbols on here that show a different type of light uh, fixtures throughout the site. So this is a fully landscaped, uh, a fully lit landscape with lighting, uh, in the form of light, uh, like bollards or, uh, wall lights or, um, uplights, uh, throughout, throughout, uh, throughout the, um, the site. Okay. This drawing here is, uh, the roof. It's colored just to show you the extent of the green roof. Uh, we have a four-foot wide, uh, service access all the way around the building. And as Fred mentioned, we have the stepping pads, these little two-by-two pavers that allow uh, access throughout this area for site service. Um, and one of the comments before, um, um, was about maintenance and this, all of this landscape, including the ground level landscaping uh, is cut, will be covered by the strata, uh, under a landscape, uh, maintenance contract. Um, so they'll have somebody, they'll have a landscape contract, uh, out with a maintenance company that, uh, will come throughout the course of the year and undertake, uh, maintenance duties to, uh, check up on the landscaping. And if there's anything that has to be replaced, like if there are some trays that have perished, they will replace those. As Fred mentioned, we have, um, a couple of water hose bibs to allow manual irrigation in the event that we have prolonged drought. And, uh, if the, if the plants get under stress, there is the opportunity to manually main, maintain this to, to keep the longevity of the plants. This drawing, uh, is a standard drawing that we have on most of our drawings, but they, they show in detail uh, some components of the landscape. For instance, the paving on grade, paving on slab, unit pavers. This is, uh, an elevation of the fence that will be installed and, uh, typical planting details. Um, just to, to ensure that, um, everything is up to British Columbia, BCSLA standards. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much. And I believe that is the end of the applicant's presentations. Uh, I may get you to unshare your screens.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Ms. Husek, can you please advise if there? Ms. Husek, can you please advise if there's anyone in attendance electronically at this meeting who wishes to speak to bylaw three, two, two, one?
Thank you, Mayor Pahal. Currently, there are no members of the public in attendance.
Thank you. I'll call for a second time for speakers on bylaw three, two, one, one. Or three, two, two, one, sorry.
Thank you. No speakers.
I'll call for a third and final time for speakers on bylaw three, two, two, one.
And no speakers.
Seeing no speakers, do any members of council have any questions regarding bylaw three, two, two, one? Please raise your hand. So we'll start with Counselor Solium, and then we'll go to Counselor Wallace. Counselor Solium.
Hi there. Just this is my first time looking at the plans for a green roof. Can you get into a little bit more detail as to what would be planned to be growing on there? And and like what height they would be? Or is it just going to be vegetation, like vegetables or something? I'm not I'm not a hundred percent clear on this.
The green roof is it's a low profile roof and typically it is planted with these trays. The trays are typically about maybe, for instance, maybe fourteen inches square. And they're only about four to six inches in depth. You can buy, we can order different depth, but it's a low profile planted with sedums which are drop tolerant. And they basically live on the roof and it's basically just to give a cover as insulative or a certain value for that. But they are not your typical, let's say, shrub planting. So it's not intended to be planted with shrub planting or anything like that. It's a low profile green roof that covers the entire roof. It's planted with minimal amount of maintenance required. And as I was mentioning before, we do supply like a hose bib on each end of the on each end of the roof to to allow manual irrigation in case we encounter, let's say, really prolonged drought periods. And some of the material may be under stress. So it allows them the the landscape contractor to come up and actually bring up hoses and actually manually irrigate to keep keep the the all the green roof healthy and alive. So, yeah, so it's it's basically a very narrow, very, very low profile landscape layer on top of the roof.
Thank you, Counselor Solium. Did you have any further questions?
Not at this time.
Thank you. We'll go to Counselor Wallace and Counselor Mack.
Thank you, through the mayor, Pahal. To, sorry, Mr. Maru Yama, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right, but Mike kind of talked about or asked the question, I was curious about the green roof and what the benefits and the sustainability factor of it would be. And if there was ever any thought of putting a garden, you know, a you know, to be able to grow food up there, just in a little piece of it, because it's covered, the entire roof is covered with a green roof. So I guess for me, like, looking at the purpose of greening buildings, you know, sometimes it's to attract bees for pollination. You know, we've talked about food security is 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 top of mind as well. So, you know, that's a question of mine. And then if you retained any green that already existed, any trees or yeah, so that those are my questions.
Okay, well, for for the green roof, we didn't program it other than basically a low profile green roof. And so we didn't, we didn't actually have any program for for having rooftop gardens and things like that. I think it may be problematic with perhaps building code or maybe Fred, you can speak up to it a bit, but we never, we never explored that for, let's say, garden plots and things like that. I know lots of buildings have it, but when you when you entertain that type of landscape, you have to have considerably more weight on the roof because you need more soil. You have to build up all the planters with a structure. Then you have to have a certain form of, you know, like accessibility. You need more additional area for, let's say, working space. Just things like that for the public to use. So that, you know, we 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 just went forward with a standard green roof. And the green roof in terms of sustainability, also, it really supports the idea of rainwater helping stormwater management because you, as you can tell, that whole area will be able to absorb moisture. And there's actually, at the bottom of all these trays, there is a little reservoir where they can hold water and the whole key to that is holding water for prolonged periods before you dump dump the water into the city system.
Thank you, Counselor Wallace. Did you have any further questions or comments?
No, I think that explains the sustainability, what you just mentioned about the collection of water. In your plantings, I didn't see, I saw the trees and and just further to that, just in the plantings of perennials or annuals, if there was the anything planted as far as you know, the collector of, you know, the butterflies and the bees and and so on, right? Just as attracting.
Yeah, so we we provided numerous, there's a new, there's the the plant palette is quite extensive and and a lot of the plants are flowering, a lot of them are perennials. We have deciduous, we have coniferous trees, and all of these are all positive for habitation for, let's say, for insects, bees, birds. So it's all, it all provides a nice sort of a micro micro ecology for for this type of condition, which is, I think, in almost all landscapes, it's very supportive of all this. Although there, you know, there are some plants that are that are actually more, what do you call conducive to certain types of of birds or things like that. And some of them produce, you know, like fruits and things like that. But you have to also understand that there is a conflict between some some things like this because of the mess. Like if we start planting nothing but fruiting trees and half of all all the fruits become a maintenance problem and it becomes a you know, it just, so there's has to be a happy medium. And I think most of what we've done with the landscaping supports what you're talking about.
Thank you. Any further comments?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I believe Counselor Wallace asked if any existing trees on the site will be retained. Could you comment on that?
Well, on this site, I believe most of the trees are in conflict with the development. So I would think most of them are coming out. And then there are trees that are on the periphery that will be protected.
Thank you. Counselor Mack.
I was just wondering if you were able to provide the rough price points? How how much these are going to cost? I know you have, like, there's one bedrooms, there's two bedrooms, there's three bedrooms. Do you have an idea what the market price of of these is going to roughly be?
Fred, I think that's maybe directed to you.
Oh, yeah. I don't have an answer for that. As you know, that the cost of construction is fluctuating a lot. And the market at this point of time is not it doesn't have a you cannot really foresee the future. So I don't know whether a developer has consulted real estate agents for this purpose, but it will be very difficult to come up with a price. And in terms of cost of construction, I can give you an indication that it will be around two hundred and eighty dollar per square foot to construct, hard construction costs, and then thirty percent for soft costs. So it will be three hundred and ten dollar per square foot, hard and soft costs. But how much they would sell? I have no answer.
Do you have any further questions, Counselor Mack?
Yes, through Mayor Pahal, back to Mr. Adab. For the parking stalls, are they going to be free for residents?
Yeah, that's a very good question. Yes, it will be one per unit free. So we will have eighty-four parking, eighty-four unit. So eighty-four parking will be sold part of the unit price. The rest of the parking, obviously, the units that are larger, three bedrooms and large two bedrooms, and then and they will have, they need more parking. So for those, they will pay around fifteen to twenty thousand dollar extra per parking. If there was any parking left that nobody was interested, it will be the developer's property and can rent rent it out to those who are interested to rent parking.
Thank you.
Do you have any further questions, Counselor Mack?
No further questions.
Thank you. Counselor Albrecht, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pahal. And through Mayor Pahal to the applicant. I just want to recognize and thank you for incorporating all the, let's say, recommendations or requests from our advisory design panel. I think that's a great way of having a project be welcomed into our community. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. I also want to recommend that you try to use as much local goods and services as possible when you're in the construction process. Help stimulate the local economy. Everyone needs a rear lift up these days. So I just wanted to put that plug in there. Two questions I have for you, and then I have some for staff. One is, I didn't hear anything about a traffic management plan or construction management plan. We always seem to get a lot of feedback in neighborhoods where the contractors or the tradespeople are using up a lot of the road area for parking and impacting them on a daily basis. So I'm just wondering about that as well as is the plan to use electric heating? It may be a little early yet, but I just, I'm trying to get get people to get away from the use of fossil fuels. So if you could answer those two questions, and then I have something for staff.
Thank you very much. In terms of construction noise and management, when it comes, we always do that for our project with City of Langley. We, if you just to the building permit stage, there will be a meeting. In that meeting, we will come up with a plan. And at that time, also, the contractor has his, the is is the developer has his contract or in as well available. So we come up with a plan. And there will be definitely for the building of this size, one person allocated to traffic management and couple of flag people around. So that will be definitely will be taken care of during the building permit process. Sorry, what was your second question?
I was asking about the heating, fossil fuel or electric?
No, it is electric.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And if I could, Mayor Pahal, I'd like to ask staff about what is it again, the orphan lots to the north? Can they be developed in a in a reasonable fashion? As well as a pedestrian connection from two hundred A and fifty-three A to that the sidewalk that's being provided along the north side of the building. And then one last question for staff is the two hundred street sidewalk or pedestrian corridor? Is that asphalt or concrete? Thank you.
Yes, through to Mayor Pahal, to Counselor Albrecht, I think I can handle the first two, and I might defer the third one to engineering. The first one is that the, when this application came in and there was discussion about the redevelopment of this area, which we we call the elbow, just by the shape of it, along two hundred street and and fifty-third. We did take a really close look at it, and those properties to the north can be developed on their own viably. The property is large enough. It's about nineteen hundred and fifty square feet. So that's larger than the standard zone that has been used in the city in the past for this scale of development. We are actually considering a slightly smaller lot size for the new zoning bylaw. The properties would also be wide enough to accommodate an underground parking garage that would be efficient and allow for access to fifty-three A. And I believe your second question was about a pedestrian connection between fifty-three A and two hundred. Yeah, so that's something we also looked at. It is possible to look at a pedestrian connection between fifty-three A and two hundred when those remaining properties are developed in order to create a pathway along there, potentially with the realignment of that sanitary sewer. But that's something that we're going to look at. There is a greenway, as you can see in the in the package, that is planned to be put in, just another development over to the east that would can provide another connection between fifty-three A and fifty-three, and then to a crosswalk that goes over to Nikko Mekko Elementary. I hope that answers your two questions, and I see that our manager of engineering services has popped up here.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Johansson. I just nice to know that we're considering all those different pieces. Thank you.
Good evening, through the mayor to Counselor Albrecht. The sidewalk is going to be concrete. As with the whether it's going to be eventually here, we are going to have a mop or any other form of active transportation included. It's very early at this stage. We are not sure it's going to be mop during the design offsite design. We will work with the consulting engineer that developer has. But usually in cases like this, it's going to be in the interim, it's going to be landscaped until the entire segment is ready for a continuous kind of bike lane. Then most likely, we're going to go with it protected bike lane. But the sidewalk will be concrete.
Hey, thank you. I just wanted to make sure concrete is so much easier to for longer life and less maintenance. So thank you.
Counselor Solium. I believe you're on mute, Counselor.
Through the mayor to the applicant, I'm a little bit new. I just got on to council, and so this is a little bit a learning experience for me. I'm just kind of curious what the the reasoning is for the mix of of apartment sizes that you guys you guys have. So in terms of how many number of three bedrooms that you have. And I was wondering whether you considered that you are across the street from a school, whether that meant that you were implementing more three bedrooms than you normally would, or is it just a kind of a standard amount that you have for for a given six story building or not? Thank you.
I can answer that question. Basically, we are following the the policy of diversity and providing as much as possible, different type of accommodation for different users. Of course, the school is there and three bedrooms and two bedroom and dens can have children and using that school just across the road. But basically, the policy now in every municipality is to provide larger unit as well as smaller units. Ten years ago, it was all one bedroom, very little two bedroom and no three bedroom. But we are now in a different era. And so in terms of marketability, in terms of diversity, in terms of sustainability, I think the the mix the mix of three, two, one, and one bedroom and ten is it was intended. And we do that for almost all of our projects.
Did you have any further questions? Or comments?
I think I was just, yeah, in terms of, I'm trying to think about what the cost would be from your end to increase the number of three bedrooms and decrease the number of from your end to increase the number of three bedrooms and decrease the number of, uh, one bedrooms. If that's something that's viable at this stage of the game, or whether it's, um, something to keep in mind for another project.
The three bedrooms, uh, uh, is limited. The area that you put the three bedrooms are either at the corner of the, because they need more windows. So it's either at the corner of the building or on the top floor. And that's what we had. So if you put a three bedroom in the middle of a building, it will be, uh, living dining, two bedroom. And where the three bedroom is, so it's, will be three bedroom, very long, inefficient. And, uh, so how much corner you have, you can accommodate more three bedrooms. And the location as well. I mean, if a project is in uh, City of Langley or is in Vancouver or is in West Vancouver, the demand for three bedroom and, uh, two bedroom is different. Uh, we don't have young population in West Vancouver, so mostly should be three bedroom, two, two bedroom and then. And it's, uh, it's a pity because City of District of West Vancouver is losing population every year. And they talk about it every year and still losing population every year. But the City of Langley in the past, I've been working with City of Langley for thirty-five years. Uh, uh, so it has gone a very, very long way and now it has very good stock of different type of accommodation in terms of three bedroom, one bedroom, two bedroom. And now that your councillor, new councillor is the best municipality to work with in the whole Canada.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Solium. Any further comments from council? So I'm not seeing any. Uh, I just have a couple of questions. One to the applicant, Mr. Adab, I just wanted to make sure I heard you clearly. All the units will have functional air conditioning the day they open?
Yes.
That is great to hear. Uh, this is probably more directed to staff. Maybe it is through to the applicant. Given that it's a school across the street, is there a plan to have additional flaggers before and after school? Just because I could imagine it getting pretty um, a lot of diverse uses at that time of day. So maybe that's to, to staff?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mayor Pahal. Um, yes, as we, uh, if this project is approved, it goes through building permit and to, uh, construction phases, part of the pre-con, we'll, uh, we'll definitely, uh, keep that in mind as part of the traffic planning and, and traffic management. And also looking at the trades parking, that was something that was mentioned earlier. Uh, the manager of engineering services may have further to comment on that, but we'll definitely keep that in mind, uh, as we move forward in this.
Thank you. And, oh, yes, um, to the applicant, or was that to Mr. Gill?
No, nothing further, actually. Uh, uh, um, they covered everything. I was going to say the same thing with. It was coming.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Gill. Uh, another question I have, uh, just for clarity, there are fifty-three A and two hundred A are already connected. Um, I know Mr. Dad was talking about some road network changes. Could we get some more context on what the proposed road network changes are there? And maybe that's to, um, I don't know if that's to Mr. Johansson or Mr. Gill?
I can show you the, uh, let me just, you share.
I can see your screen, which is great, on the sustainability and green measures.
No, that's one.
That's fine.
Mi- Mr. Mayor, I believe, um, the reference was to just how the, the cul-de-sac, um, is where fifty-three A and two hundred A join right now.
Yes.
The idea there is to normalize that into a curve. Uh, again, that's something that, uh, Mr. Gill might want to talk about, but i- it's basically what's shown in that image there.
Oh, okay.
So this is the, is ninety degree.
Hmm.
Action here. This doesn't exist now, but, uh, this will be provided to the civil drawings and city.
Okay, so, um, just, yeah, I, I know that neighborhood fairly well. So basically you're just removing the cul-de-sac.
Yes.
Perfect. Uh, and then just one final question. So with the, um, sort of the crosswalk, there's, um, will we be maintaining the, I guess, the north leg and the east leg of two hundred street and fifty-third avenue during construction? And I don't know if that is to maybe, um, something for Mr. Johansson?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, just, uh, for clarity, are you asking if, uh, um, certain frontages are open during construction?
Yeah, so basically will the frontage at, uh, on the northeast corner of two hundredth and fifty-third be open during construction? Or, like I said, will people be able to use the, the street there or will they have to cross the road or how's that going to look?
Hmm. I may, uh, defer this to Mr. Gill and then I.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, uh, trying to understand the question. Are you referring to the current, uh, driveway on the, uh, northeast, uh, northwest corner of fifty-three and two hundred?
It's more for pedestrians, um, for how they cross the road. Will they have to be doing any sort of double back things?
Cross the road from?
Uh, two hundred. So basically if you're crossing from on the, if you're on the north side, uh, fifty-third, are you able to cross the street and then walk up or down, or do you have to do, um, sort of an L?
You're asking if the sidewalks are going to remain open during.
Correct.
Yeah, yes, you know, it was just, I can't share my screen to make sure that the answer that I'm providing is, are you're talking about here, this side?
Cur- I'm talking about, yes, that sidewalk there.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you. And then also, sorry, Mr. Gill, and also continuing north.
Uh, continues to.
Because there's a sidewalk there today. Will that be maintained during the construction?
This one.
Sorry, uh, though if you're on the east side of two hundred, yes, so will that sidewalk still be there? Yes.
Uh, y- yes, actually, uh, if they, their plan, construction plan requires using this, they have to come up with, uh, some, some, uh, traffic management plan. We haven't heard anything yet from them. Uh, like I mentioned before, it's a very early stage, especially from the engineering perspective. We have to see what their, uh, game plan is and then we work with them. But yes, there will be always access for pedestrians, one way or another.
Thank you very much for that.
Yeah.
Uh, that answers my questions. And just double checking again that there's no further comments from council. And seeing done, um, may I have a mover and a seconder to close the public hearing? So that's moved by councillor James and seconded by councillor Mack. All in favor? Any opposed? It is carried unanimously. The public hearing is now closed. This bylaw will come forward for consideration of third reading at a future council meeting. So that is the end of the meeting and I believe we can stop the recording.